So much get away at all or just kind of.
One second is gonna make sure the live stream is going.
That's my.
Let me go back down here.
You got family down there?
All right, you should be good to go, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the, uh, February twelfth, twenty twenty-five, me, uh, playing a zoning commission meeting to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance to the flags. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, under God, in this world of liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
It's that time again.
Okay, uh, roll call of, uh, officers. And alternates.
Commissioner Harvey?
Here.
Commissioner Fox?
Here.
Commissioner Minor?
Is he online?
Minor is not online.
Yes.
No, neither minor or Nafus are online.
Okay. Commissioner Pasquarelli? Chairman Sobieski?
Here.
Commissioner Woods?
Here. Here. She's online.
She is.
She is.
Okay, you're all set.
Can we have enough for a forum? Okay. If you do, you'd probably need to seat your alternates.
Okay, uh, I'd like to seat, uh, Commissioner Hoffman for, uh, Commissioner Pasquarelli. And, uh, I think that's it, right?
Uh, Commissioner Walkama.
Oh, Walkama, right, I'm sorry. Commissioner Walkama for, uh, Commissioner Wa- uh, Woods.
No, Woods is.
I mean, uh, Commissioner Minor.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You okay tonight? You okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure.
You're losing a little bit, you know?
All right. Uh, approval of the agenda, Spiner?
There are no changes to the agenda.
This time?
There are no changes and thank you for, uh, allow me to, uh, participate remotely tonight, under the weather. Uh, but the only changes are the, it is an amended agenda and there were just some small changes, but no changes for tonight. Uh, there was just some changes on the, uh, section numbers for the agenda.
Okay, thank you, uh, Planner, um, Dixon. Okay, before we go to public comment, I'd like to, uh, welcome our new member of the, uh, TPZ, Mr. Joseph Harpy. He is replacing Commissioner Claffey. I believe, uh, Joe, you know, Peter Hoffman, Mike Fox, myself, um, you know, Eric, Maureen. And online is Steve Woods and, uh, Susan Walkoma.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, we're going to a public participation ride, so I'll listen on the agenda. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen, lady. Uh, Bill McCarthy, two oh six Churchill Drive. I don't really have much to say as far as what's going on, uh, in the town. I just, I, I wanna talk to the public for a second and encourage them to be involved. Um, there's a lot of stuff that's coming up as far as the town council, budget season and everything like that. And the commissions that we have in, in place, the, uh, conservation commission, commi- commission and the, uh, TPZ both help perform admirably within the coun- within the confines of what has to be done within the town. I think Eric and, uh, Paul are doing a wonderful job and I heard that they're trying to get another person to come in and help them out. Um, I guess that's it. I think you guys are doing a great job. Welcome, welcome, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online, Eric?
There are some people online, but nobody has their hand raised at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Move on to the, uh, zoning officers' report. Do we have a copy of the zoning officers' report? Are there any questions? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to the chairman, Eric.
Yes, sir.
I see you've got finally got that eleven ninety-two and eleven ninety-eight Willard Avenue. They have, you know, been, I've seen cars on and off there for well over a year.
Yeah.
I might have called you once outside, but, you know, but, but it started getting ridiculous, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Noticing it.
Any other comments or, uh, zoning officers' report?
Questions?
Questions, comments? Any online?
Nobody online, has their hand raised, Mr. Chairman?
Say, thank you, Eric. Great job as usual.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll have, uh, remarks by commissioners.
Commissioner Hoffman? Yes, I was curious if there's any, uh, update on the location over at Keeney Manufacturing Building as to what's happening over there. I've heard a couple of, uh, companies who said that they wanted to get in there and they never received any feedback as to when it might be available, uh, if it's coming available, so they went somewhere else. Within town, but at least not there. And they were very concerned because they really hoped to be able to do that particular facility as their, their, uh, home base. So I was wondering if you had any update?
So, what I can, you want me to speak to this, Paul?
Yeah, I, I can start off with just saying, and I think Eric would, uh, mention this, so we, we have met, um, with an architect who is working with them. Um, I think, uh, this is something that may end up, um, in front of the commission, um, sometime in the future too, as they continue to discuss which uses they're looking to go in there. I think it's a lot of the chicken and the egg issue of looking for a larger, um, you know, tenant or a fit out to fit the space and then working through around it. But again, we continue to have discussions with them and I think, um, at some point they may be coming back in front of the commission as well as we, you know, continue to support them and what they're looking to do and, you know, revitalize that building.
Yeah, and I, I understand. I've heard from other potential tenants there that, you know, the real, the realtor doesn't, their broker didn't call them back for Keeney and uh, like I said, I, I believe that they're trying to secure an anchor tenant and then move forward with dividing up the remaining space. That's just a guess on my part, but that's what I su- we suspect.
Yeah, because they originally wanted to have look smaller people in those spaces. And, you know, when you don't call back these smaller people that want the space, you know, you're really shooting yourself in the foot and now it's gonna come out to, okay, we gotta go to bigger spaces, we need bigger clients. And I think that's just gonna create more hassle than it, you know, than it really needs to be.
Yeah, and, and again, they have to decide on what their space is gonna be so they can juggle their parking to make sure that their parking count works for the uses and stuff. So I think that's a- another issue that they're looking at.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
No problem.
Here, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, once again through you, Eric, Paul. Any updates on the, uh, lawsuit on Fidel? I think, uh, I think people walking along the street are gonna start tripping over his cars.
So what I can say is pursuant to the order of the judge, we did an inspection on both properties last week, documented all the vehicles and chassis that we could locate. Um, and I took me a, a good day of providing a report, logging all the photographs, sending everything to our attorney. And we are, actually have a meeting scheduled with our attorney next Wednesday. So he can move, because he has to go back to court because the judge didn't say if he's not done by X, you can do this. So we have to get that determination, hopefully so. We're gonna consult with the attorney and file what we need to file and move forward. And as the courts allow, we will continue to take action.
Hmm. I mean, we're starting to see it on social media too, so.
Understood. I understand the frustration. A number of the neighbors called me the next day like, I saw you were out there, when are you towing?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This man a raise, Paul, will you?
Paul was with me, we were, it was, uh,
Yep, it was, it was a snowy day of walking around and figured it had to be when it was scheduled, but, but, uh, yeah, it, uh, I, I think, just move forward and again, it's kind of noted in the, in the judgment, um, that we received, um, you know, the final statement on that was that we have the right to inspect to determine if there are any zoning violations, if there remains. And then nothing else was in part of the memorandum from the judge's decision. So again, that forces us to again, go back to the court and show what exists and then get the, uh, judge's permission to continue or get the judge's order to continue, should I say?
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Harvey? I just had a, uh, quick question on this and I'm not sure that it would fall within our purview, but I understand LA Fitness is closing down. Have they made a final decision on that?
I believe it's closed.
It is closed.
It's closed.
Do we know whoever the owner of that property is intends to correct the parking lots issues? Or is he gonna just let them?
That I do not know. It's, it's owned by one of the large, uh, IRETs, which is, they own these, these corporations and it's, it's an umbrella arm of, of Sams, because I think they still own, and it's indifferent, uh, IRETs that do maintenance and different things on it, so we have not heard any, no one has reached out to me to inquire about the site or anything going on there or potential future use at this point in time.
Good, thank you. All set? Anybody online, uh?
No one has their hand raised, yep.
All right. Next we'll move to public hearings. We do not have any.
Correct.
So we'll move to the approval of the minutes. Abstained.
I'll second.
No, I just.
He abstained, you don't wanna.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Hey, thank you. All right, any changes? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post? Thank you.
Mr. Fox abstained.
Uh, sorry.
No, I said, Mr. Fox abstained, correct.
Okay. Uh, new business. Under new business, we have a proposed text amendment, alternative energy accessory structures. Um, the document is A L T Energy Assis- accessory structures staff report. Draft section six point nine, alternate energy accessory structures, PD. Eric, you wanna read that or you want me to?
Um, it, do, Paul, do you just wanna give a, a brief on this?
Yeah, I can give a brief summary going in, Eric can take over and hopefully my voice doesn't give out during when I'm talking, uh, so, uh, as, as kind of the commission, as the, as the, uh, TPZ will, uh, kind of remember, this has been in front of you talking about Besses. Um, uh, it's pretty well laid out, I think, in the staff memo that originally is introduced. A pre-opinion came in and at the most recent meeting, we discussed this on November twenty-fourth, that, um, it was kind of discussed that, okay, this is okay to proceed administratively. Um, discussions with Eric and us looking at it and thinking about, okay, yes, you proved this one use in there. We are kind of okay with the guidelines as far as how far it is away, since it's no longer near the street. It's far enough away from a property line, but what guidelines are gonna be in place in the future for the next installation? And if we go with the standard accessory structure, accessory structure, um, guidelines, there really aren't that many in the regulations other than it needs to be in the side or the rear of the property and at least ten feet off the property line or five feet in some cases, I believe ten for commercial. Uh, so these have been put together. Um, again, I did speak with the, uh, fire chief in the past as well, as long as the, along with the fire marshal. Um, there's a lot of fire codes that cover Besses, uh, NFPA fifty-five, I think, which I've highlighted several times in some of these meetings, has a lot of those requirements that talk about fire suppression within the system, how the system is constructed, signage for the system. So that is the fire code. So what I've kind of, uh, done, um, so you can move to the, uh, draft, if you could care, uh, Eric?
Yep. And I, and I can read through this later as well.
Yeah, and, and, and the key of this is, so this is an overall draft of where we see these alternative energy structures. It's, I'm open to wording, it's kind of, it's, it's the nuances of zoning and of course we, uh, abbreviate everything as AES, but, uh, that this is gonna, it's, it's seen as an overall framework to, as we work on further things. Again, the proposal I'm planning to put forward right now is just for battery and your storage solution. We have been working with this, uh, applicant who was looking to put this in there. They have been, um, pretty good working with us. They originally were gonna write their own regulation, but then decided not to put it in the front yard. So again, this puts the purpose forward. How it applies, again, a permit required right now as it's written, so administrative permit, it'd be the zoning permit. The zoning permit also incorporates, um, the other sections of the zoning regulation. Um, so we have battery energy storage solution. Again, for right now, solar array, canopy and tracking systems, those are on there for more of your information of what I'm looking to do in the future, um, with this, right, with this, uh, section of the regulations. But I would just be footing forward, so under definitions, battery energy storage, I'd be putting forward six point nine point five, um, and those requirements, and then we could add to this, um, in the future. So this is kind of our foray in looking into the requirements, what makes sense for this site and future sites. Um, a lot of the key is, aspects on this are ones that are very similar to what, um, the fire department was looking at, as far as like their concern for how do they attack the fire, how do they fight it? NFPA fifty-five, I think, does a good job in talking about how the system is constructed, but it doesn't really talk about the site as a whole, and that's zoning's area of jurisdiction. So again, this is crafted not to step into the, uh, the fire code into the building codes. This is to look at the areas where zoning, um, either where there's an absence of a requirement under NFPA fifty-five or any other fire codes or where zoning has jurisdiction, again, distance to property lines, um, things of that nature. So I think Eric can read through them. Um, again, the main points that I kind of wanted to point out is, um, that two important things, uh, fifty feet from any side or rear property line. Again, this is a new use as fire suppression technology, uh, continues as, as we get used to these type of uses. Um, these can probably, you know, be looked at again in the future, but again, this is something that is, um, cutting edge for our state for what we're seeing get installed, not as large, huge installations. And again, another point is located one hundred foot from a property containing a single, two-family or multifamily residential use. Um, again, this is, this does not include commercial uses such and it doesn't include, um, transient, um, housing as well, hotels, so that is something to note. But i- i- there is typically, the main concern on that one is A, of course, fire safety, but a little bit also too about, there is some noise, it tends not to be too hefty when you come to these type of uses, but there's a little bit of noise with that. Not as much as I would say a diesel generator kicking on or anything of that nature. But when the system runs, when it's cooling, when it's exhausting, there is some noise. We do have noise standards in the town of Newington, um, that they would still have to, uh, they would still have to abide by and those are within our code of ordinances and not in our zoning regulations, if I remember correctly. Um, but those are things that I would just like to highlight for you. And the other one with the auxiliary equipment, again, the hu- the fifty feet from the property lines is for the battery. The other auxiliary equipment, like a transformer and there are aux racks um, that go with these type of uses that have more of the control components for it, so not the actual batteries, um, which are the more concern, um, for fire safety, that a little bit of flexibility in those, that they can be located on the site. Um, and that, you know, we can continue to work with them, because if you had a fifty-foot setback from that and everything else, then where are you gonna put the transformers? Transformers normally do not go deep into a property and they go closer to the utility lines. So this allows it to be, uh, feasibly built, but also provide all of the safety, um, um, considerations, um, that I've kind of looked at. All you, Eric?
All right, would you like me to read, read through the proposal, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I just have, I just have one question for Paul. Um, should we have not put in ballards around, around the system, require that?
Yep, so we do have a specific requirement on that, so that is in C, um, three. So if it's within twenty-five feet of a parking area or a driveway, uh, vehicle mitigation barrier. So that would be reviewed, um, we would ask, uh, you know, we can review it too for ballards, but typically we would ask the town engineer as well to say, okay, yep, what is this thing? Okay, it's a parking space, a ballard is good. It's a driveway, is there an incline? Are there trucks moving on this site? You, sometimes you need, you know, heavier duty, um, mitigation than, you know, a smaller ballard spacing. That's something we would work with the engineering department on.
All right, thank you. Better.
Okay. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One quick thing.
Uh, Commissioner Fox?
To the chairman, Paul, just a little grammatical thing. And I'm the one that would pick it up, of course. Anyway, uh, under definitions, the solar tracking system, uh, device operating on one or more axes containing, uh, one or more axes, they should be an E instead of an I, containing solar photovoltaic panels, which is designed to optimize the efficiency. Solar energy generation by, should be maintaining the panels.
Yep. Yeah, and that's, uh, absolutely, and that's, I, I plan to bring the, uh, solar forward on that one. I'll definitely note that. And again, it won't be proposed right now and I just wanted to clarify that, because it could be some confusion with, okay, this is the whole regulation. I just kind of wanted to set the framework for you to understand what our goal is with this section.
And.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
And I, and I.
Thank you.
I'll go through this and if you guys have any comments or concerns, please let us know, because, you know, we do have to tweak this and, and get this to CROG for their review as well.
Right.
So.
Thirty days, yeah.
So, so the, uh, applicant going forward will be able to move forward with their project.
Okay.
So as we propose, this will be under section six point nine, known as alternati- alternative energy accessory structures AES. Six point nine point one, purpose. The purpose of this regulation is to provide for the placement of alternative energy structures AES, which are accessory to the primary use of a parcel. When located in a manner which is safe, efficient and environmentally responsible, these installations can help to support local energy needs and increase grid reliability in a manner which does not disrupt adjacent properties. Six point nine point two, applicability. In addition to any relevant provision of the CT general statutes, as they may be amended, the provisions of this section shall apply to any alternative energy source installed or modified within the town with a total generation or capacity of up to one megawatt hour. The relevant portions of section three zone use regulations should be consulted for any alternative energy structure which is proposed as a primary use. Six point nine point three, permit required. No AES shall be constructed, located or modified unless a zoning permit has been obtained in accordance with section seven point two. Six point nine point four, definitions. Battery ener- energy storage system, BES, a system consisting of batteries, electric components and associated equipment designed to store electrical energy for use at a later time. Solar array, a solar energy collection system that is attached to a building, structure or is a freestanding ground-mounted system consisting of a linked series of solar photovoltaic panels intended primarily for the collections, inversion, storage and distribution of solar energy. C, solar canopy, a structure designed to support solar photovoltaic panels, PV, which is elevated above the ground or other surface. Solar tracking system, a device operating on one or more axes containing solar photovoltaic panels, PV, which is designed to optimize the efficiency of solar energy generation by maintaining the panels at an optimal angle to capture maximum sunlight. Six point nine point five, battery energy storage system, A, location. One, shall only be permitted on property located within the I industrial, B dash BT, Business Berlin Turnpike and PD Plan Development Zones. Two, shall be located within a side or rear yard only. Three, shall not be located closer to the front property or a street line than the principal building. Four, shall not be located within fifty feet from side or rear property lines. Five, shall not be located within one hundred feet from a property containing a single two-family or multifamily residential use. Six, auxiliary equipment, including required transformers, may be located closer than fifty feet to a property line, but shall not be located in the required yards and shall be suitably screened from public view. B, height and size. One, the maximum height of a BES, including any supporting structures, shall not exceed ten feet. Two, the maximum system footprint shall not exceed three hundred square feet. C, security and screening. One, shall be substantially screened from public view using landscaping or opaque fencing or wall. Two, shall be enclosed with a fence of not less than seven feet in height with a self-locking gate mechanism. Three, shall provide a suitable vehicle mitigation barrier if located within twenty-five feet of a parking area or driveway. Four, security lighting shall be provided for emergency operations and shall be reasonably shielded, shielded so as not to encroach on adjacent properties. D, application submission requirements. In addition to the permitting requirements of section seven point two, applications shall include the following. A statement preparer, prepared by an appropriately licensed professional confirming that the application has been prepared in compliance with all applicable building, electrical and the most current Connecticut State Fire Code and all other applicable fire codes and best facility safety standards, certifications, including, but not limited to NFPA and any other applicable industry standards. And for the future, six point nine point six, ground-mounted solar and six point nine point seven, roof-mounted solar.
Thank you, Eric.
So.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um,
Yes.
Just like to add that these are, th- this is a pretty holistic view of that and we are open to comments. Um, and that and whether, you know, specific things like the size and the height, I have talked to the uh, applicant and they think, yeah, ten feet should work, uh, is that something that we wanna see in there? So that, that's kind of the, the feedback that we're looking for. And also there might be some minor tweakings as, after hearing Eric read it out loud, especially the last section D, that I think I could trim down and keep the same intent.
And again, this is part of the reason for this is, so in the future, as these become more popular, I have some groundwork to work with and, and being able to approve them, rather than just like somebody coming in off the cuff again, like, here we go. You know, wh- what are the rules? So that's why I think it's best, I think we're doing the right thing, is to get this in place now for the first one and then move forward and then eventually we may also have to address residential properties if you choose to do so.
Right. Okay. Uh, is there any other questions? Commissioner Harvey? So the footage, uh, on page two, you talk about the ten feet and then the three hundred square feet. Those are just guide numbers for you?
Right. Those are, you know, those have to be, you know, the minimums of what they're, they're looking for. So the fence has to be at least ten feet high that they're providing, or, I'm sorry, seven feet high for the fence. And, um, the three hundred square feet, yeah, ten feet high for the structure, seven feet for the fence, and then three hundred square feet is, is just the footprint of the unit itself. The fence may encompass more than that area, but the unit itself, it can't exceed that number. Which is, you know.
So those numbers in, in, in your view, you and Paul's view, keeps us manageable?
Yeah, so in, in looking at some of the other proposals that we've looked at for some other surrounding towns, you know, with the same, approximate same size of the, you know, less than one megawatt type of situation. Because once it gets over that, then it's regulated by PURA, so.
Yeah, and I can, I can share too that in Connecticut, um, and actually I did an exhaustive search the last time, uh, we were discussing this and I actually reached out to, uh, Tai Chi. I think, uh, you have all, uh, worked with Mike in the past, um, that they did a search as well, um, and they could not find any in Connecticut. These numbers actually come out of, um, New York. Um, they actually are more on the forefront of actually coming up with regulations. A lot of them do it in a very different way. They do not have the same uh, zoning and ordinance framework exactly that we have. So they regulate them slightly differently, but they actually do have regulations. But again, that's a section that I'm open to, uh, comments on whether it should be in there or whether we feel that they kind of self-regulate themselves by size.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Ask Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Uh, just real quick, I'm just a little curious. The, uh, uh, the best facility that's gonna be up is six seventy-five Cedar Street. Is that, would that be kind of an average size? Is, and is that like around three hundred square feet or, do we know?
Yeah, I think we looked at their plan and I think we, Paul even discussed with them the approximate size and I, and I believe that works and I, and again, I think he said, but like he did, he pulled this out of some New York regulations as well. Um, and it, the, the one megawatt type of unit is gonna, obviously as technology progresses, that will actually get smaller probably. Right now, this is, you know, what we're dealing with.
Right now, this is, you know, what we're dealing with today.
Cool. Any other questions?
Commissioner Woods has his hand raised.
Yes, Commissioner Woods.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um two questions in C for the security and screening. Uh both in number two, does our zoning allow seven-foot height and fence?
On commercial properties, yes, um and Eric can correct me on that one. It's actually, it doesn't allow them within the yards. But this would not be located within the yard.
Okay, and then the self-locking gate. Mechanism, would we want something like a permanent lock, you know, that, not like a pool gate that closes and it locks? But you can just lift the latch, I, I think it needs to be worded a little bit differently, so there's, and I'm assuming they're gonna put a padlock on this anyways, but. You know, I think we wanna ensure that that happens, so get in there.
Yeah, I I think the, um and again, this is something in talking with the the chief as well and through other uh. Requirements out there, I think the main thing is just so someone doesn't leave the door open. It should be locked at all times, too. Um I think they would padlock it, of course, but I'll definitely look at that language and see if there's another way to express it, but it wouldn't, you know, override.
You're talking about really more like a spring-loaded, so that the gate can't stay open, it will close no matter.
Yeah, it'll close, and yeah, it, you know, it adds more towards security, and. That was a little outside in talking with the chief, that it might have been a little outside of N F P eighty-eight, they might not have talked, I think they do talk about a lot about security, though.
Yeah, and I think.
Yeah, that might overlap a little, but yes, I'll I'll take a look at that language.
Other than that.
Thank you.
Start the phone, Eric.
Okay.
We'll know as soon as it gets tested, right?
Yeah, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and uh just going through, just kinda talk about the process. Again, this is to get it in front of you, cuz. You know, and I I always want to bring a regulation that I'm pointing forward in the T P Z's name and the town planners. Well, to to you before I submit it to CROG. But this can be open for comment at the, from the commission at the next meeting as well on this month. And as long as I have the final uh zoning regulation, I could propose more than ten days before um the hearing. In the clerk's office, um that one can stand, so we still have a little bit of opportunity to tweak language in before, you know, even us getting it to CROG. As long as we don't just fundamentally change the whole thing, which I don't see.
And Mister Chairman, I have one more question.
Yes, Commissioner Woods.
When this does come in front of us for action, um will it require a public hearing?
Yes. Okay. Text amendments will require, yes.
Okay, good.
Yep, and it will require a public hearing, and I will share that, again, I have um talked with the potential, you know, the applicant who wants to put in a BES. And they are aware of all the timeframes, and I've kept open communication with them, so there isn't, you know, question about what's going on.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Commissioner. Just a quick inquiry, so Paul, are you saying that? Uh a Rocky Hill or Weathersfield or Glastonbury doesn't have a policy on this? That's why you had to go to New York, or?
Yeah, I have not found any towns that have um any specific regulations about BESs or things of this nature. They have applied a couple other towns. And a lot of them have either. You know, they they actually went through long processes with the other towns, because they kind of came into the same issue that we did, is. Do their regulations have enough uh in them to actually specify where they go? Uh but no, as far as I can tell, again, it's newer that smaller BESs are on the market, you know, uh coming to the market in in Connecticut and on sites. They've typically been either large BESs that are under the Siding Council's jurisdiction, or they've been. Accessory to a solar field where they've always been looked at as just another component. Um in that whole process, and but there's, there's very little out there. Because again, as soon as they go over uh the one megawatt. Um that goes to the Siding Council, and then we have no jurisdiction over it, other than to comment to the Siding Council.
Okay, appreciate the productivity on this so far, it's great.
All set? Thank you, Paul. Uh. Anybody online with questions on this?
Um it's not time for them to speak at the moment, but nobody has their hand raised.
All right, so.
You guys have any other comments before we move on?
Is there any other comments here?
Or anything you want to.
Okay.
Us to address, okay.
The only thing I would ask is, um when Paul gets back, is, did we wanna include um? Uh fuel cells in this, or no?
I I think, um, you know, uh the good thing about this framework. It it all exists here, um fuel cells, we might have a discussion, again, this might change a little of. At what level is it, you know? The fuel cells, most of them will go to the Siding Council. I haven't seen too many small, under one megawatt ones installations that have been, but I can. I think that this framework will work well to work it into this question. Yeah, and this is, this is gonna be a living area uh of the regulations, cuz I think that, um, you know, our. Our energy future, our technology future is always changing. And there, you know, we do not know exactly what's next, but we do know batteries are starting to change, they're looking at opportunities, there's more solid state. Potentially, so again, we don't know what direction, but we'll have an area that we can uh, you know, adapt and look ahead.
Oh, the only reason why I brought this up is because U U of H is putting one in, and I believe there is a a fuel cell in. South Windsor that they use to power the high school, that's all I was asking.
I will definitely look into that as we continue with the uh other energy um.
Okay. All right, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I'm all set.
Okay.
We all set here?
Okay.
Uh old business, uh. Discussion on future priorities for updates on zoning regulations, do you have anything on that, Eric?
No, this is kind of more of a discussion to have with you guys as we're starting to globally look at the regulations. Are there specific items that you as a body want to see addressed? Or added or removed from the regulations? And again, right now, it's just a discussion, so we can take everything in and kind of filter through and. And see how we're gonna uh attack this, cuz this is obviously a a very large-scale project to. Update the zoning regulations.
Yes, I remember, I've lived through, uh, let's see, how many of you have lived through, Mike, three? Updating the zoning regulations?
I think I've lived through three, yeah, yeah, something like that.
So, so, you know.
Thank you.
Think about things that you guys may want to address in the future specifically, and, you know, little um. Other little errors and things where our our regulations conflict from one section to another, those are the kinds of things we're looking at to just make it. Much smoother and easier to follow for John Q Public as well.
Well, the zoning regulations, unfortunately, because so many new things are coming on board and stuff like that, you're, it's gonna be a constant update and changing, that that's understandable. Uh but I did, would like to review some of the regulations, huh?
Uh, this is an item, uh Mister Chairman, this is an item that, you know, I put it on there. I'm worried a little under the weather, so I'm not gonna go into a large uh diatribe tonight uh talking about it, but. Um again, the the things we're looking at again with updating the regulations, um another thing that I'm keeping an eye on is how the regulations are structured. It seems like minutia, but most the way people are getting their information. Uh there's more and more AI crawlers out there that, you know, when you go into Google now and you search, you put in a question. Google tries to answer it for you. So how do our regulations actually um? Respond, or how do those respond to our regulations? That is something I just wanted to note the commission that I'm going to be thinking about in any rewrite. That makes sure that they're structured in a way. Um that it's actually more easily understandable, cuz I think these technologies are gonna be the way more and more people cull through information. The way more developers try to search through towns and see what and what isn't uh what they could do. And again, without changing the meaning of our regulations. I think making sure that they're in a format and that they're, again, it's seems mundane, but they're in a format that. Can be e- easily accessible by that.
Okay.
Um helps our pub. Public, it helps other ways that we can help getting information, work on ways to decide to for them easily being able to find it.
All right, thank you, Paul. Uh petitions for scheduling, Eric, want, want me to read it?
So we have two upcoming petitions. One is for a. Site plan approval and special permit for a drive-through restaurant at fifty-six Costello Road. That's it, at the, uh it's basically an out parcel at the Ashley's Furniture Store, for those who don't know the location. Um we have uh, we have received the plans, we submitted comments back. To the applicant and their engineer, and they are going through those comments now and and making adjustments, so. We could see this um sometime in March, depending. The next application is for, which we've heard about for a while, is the uh in indoor pickleball facility. Where the old Bob's store was on Kids Lane. Um again, um we've gotten that site plan, we've reviewed it. This one we have scheduled for, I think. Next month, for sure.
No, so uh Kids Lane is scheduled for next meeting for the.
It is next week, okay. So. That is what we have at the moment for those applications that we have received.
All right. Uh. Now I'm planning a, uh, updates, any, any updates, Paul?
I will spare you the long thing tonight, and at the next meeting, I'll have more of an update on um the progress of construction of, you know, the. Thing going forward. The only things I can say that everyone kind of knows too, it was announced last night, uh town manager that the Spark has closed. So we're gonna be doing pre-application, uh pre-construction meetings with them, so hopefully we should see some movement on that in the very near future. And then hopefully I'll have more to report on five fifty Cedar Street and um their C O. They still have not got it yet, they're working through some um building. Um building department uh closeouts.
Thank you. Um any communications on the letters we have here, Eric? Oh.
No, I don't think they have before you.
All right, second round for particip- public participation. Everybody online?
Let's see what we got. Go ahead, Rose.
Hi, Rose Lyons, forty-six Elton Drive, uh thank you for the update, some of it I heard last night, but I was glad to hear that. Paul will be giving an update at the next meeting, I hope you feel better soon, Paul, everything's going around, everybody's catching it, but. In any case, one thing, next month or next time, is there any kind of an update on the Frisbee property across from the property where the um? Discussion about the new zoning is taking place, I know. It's been about twenty years, and I've seen five different plans for that area or four different plans, but nothing is being built there yet. So if next time around for the next meeting, maybe you could have an update on that, thank you.
What property?
Up on the mountain, top of Cedar. Top of Cedar.
Top, she's, she's referring to the Frisbee property. Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Anybody else there?
Uh no one else has their hand raised, Mister Chairman?
Uh remarks by commissioners? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, uh. The L N P A.
Yes, we've.
Nothing.
We've, they've. I believe the owners came in and and met with the town manager. A month or so ago. Other than that, we, I, I believe Paul has had some discussions with uh. Attorneys representing the developers, but otherwise, we, there's no other formal application. Currently.
So, uh, one other thing.
Yes, Commissioner Fox.
Lots of little rumors on uh. The old Boston Market about Five Guys, but I think that's not coming about, cuz I guess what is that?
I have not heard anything from from Five Guys, and there's no formal application. I had. Discussions with the building owner maybe three, four months ago. Um and he was working at that time with a couple of different tenants. But otherwise, I haven't heard anything. So.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Any other commissioners? Commissioner Harpy?
Just wanna extend my uh thank you to the chair for all of his assistance, uh sort of made my first trip here very comfortable, thank you.
What'd you do that for?
Spoke like a.
Any other, okay, uh. The only closing remark that I have is that I wanna thank Stu Dros for his service in this commission. Uh I wish you the best of luck in the future. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a good night, everybody, be safe out there.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night.